Ready to start the meeting. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next thing I need to do is to appoint counters. We're going to have three sets of counters. We're going to have one outside, excuse me, one set outside, one set in the cafeteria, and one set in this room right here. The counters outside will be Darlene Coyle and Savice Rosina. In the cafeteria will be Linda Doherty and Melinda Kemp. Linda Doherty and Melinda Kemp. And here will be Ann Kavanaugh and Ed Coleman. Just a few reminders. First of all, please make sure your cell phones are silenced or they're off. If you wish to address this meeting, you must do so only after being recognized by myself. And you'll notice that there are microphones. There's two over there. There's one down here on the stage and one, two, three, four of them, something like that. There should be plenty of microphones. We have people outside, so if you're speaking into the microphone, please talk loud so they can hear you outside. I believe they're on a radio. So we're ready for the agenda, to hear the report to the Finance Committee, other town offices and committees, or act anything relative there too. Mrs. Jacobson.
So it's all static for everybody in their cars.
Hello, can everyone hear me? I guess you can. Good evening, town meeting members. Thank you so much for coming here this evening and for your flexibility in our logistics here and our logistical challenges, so we appreciate you being here. So I just want to just clarify a couple of things as the moderator said. Number one, when you do speak into a microphone, please speak clearly because those who are listening in their car are listening through AM 1610 radio, and it's being picked up from the sound in here, so we want to make sure they hear it. We have the seats marked out. Anything with a white piece of paper, you are welcome to sit on that. They're all spaced. If you are, you live together, you're spouses, obviously you can sit together. And we do have different microphones, as we mentioned, so we have those of us up on the stage using these. We have microphones on the floor here, a microphone over here for Mr. Baker, and a couple of microphones over in the doorways for the people who are in the cafeteria who want to come in and speak. I also want to acknowledge that we have the Finance Committee in front here, and we have members, a couple members of the Board of Selectmen who are here. They're in another room, as are the school committee in another room, in an effort to keep everybody spaced out. We also have Steve, who's with us, our custodian, who's going to be wiping down the microphones after each of the speakers. So if you don't want to touch it, clearly you don't have to, but we want to make sure that you feel comfortable using the microphones. So I think that's it as far as logistics. We have our department heads. We only asked those who had anything to do with any of the articles that were here to be here this evening to try to keep the numbers down. So our department heads are up in the balcony this time, so we could spread everybody out down here and in the other room. So we have about 15 town meeting members participating in their cars, which is wonderful because I think if we didn't have that opportunity, they might not have been able to participate. So we want to thank all of you again. This is all I'm going to be speaking to this evening, and then you are going to hear, I believe, from Tristan LaLiberty, the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and then from Ed Kuzinovich, the CFO and Assistant Town Manager. We're trying to keep everything as brief as we can and get to the business that we're all here to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kavanaugh.
Good evening, and thank you for your participation in the town meeting process. When we last met in June 2020, Town Meeting approved a $71.9 million budget for fiscal 2020. At that time and since, the pandemic and the ensuing restrictions have had a deleterious effect on local revenues and state aid. This budget adjusts the forecasted revenues accordingly and reduces appropriations in a careful manner. Tonight, we will act on the proposed $71.4 million fiscal budget, and this represents a 0.6 percent, that is less than 1 percent, increase to the fiscal 2020 budget. In accordance with the town's financial management policies and free cash policy, $250,000 is being appropriated from free cash to the stabilization fund. This amount can be used to address unanticipated needs faced by the town. $400,000 is being appropriated from free cash to the OPEB liability trust account as the town continues its commitment to addressing that long-term liability. Significant ongoing uncertainties related to the pandemic continue, and the town must remain fiscally cautious. Regarding the warrant articles, the Finance Committee takes the following position. All articles except 5, 12, and 14, we recommend approval. Articles 5, 12, and 14 were deferred to the petitioners due to their initial non-financial impact. And just a few comments on certain articles. In Article 8, the Fire Chief requests $130,000 to fund necessary but unanticipated repairs to Engine 3. In Article 11, the Assessor requests $20,000 for assistance with commercial and personal property assessments. And in Article 13, the Town Clerk requests $20,000 to address additional election costs. The Finance Committee recommends approval of these three articles. Respectfully submitted, Ann Kavanaugh, Chairman Edward Coleman, Mallory O'Brien, Kevin Kennedy, Trevor Sansucci, and Michael Marshall.
Thank you. We'll have a Selectman's Report by Selectman Tristan LaLiberty.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I'm Tristan LaLiberty, the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen. The board has taken several votes on the articles that you're about to vote on. Articles 2 through Article 13, we voted to recommend approval. Article 14 is the only one we did not take that vote on. Instead, we voted to take no position on the article at this time, and that's it. Thank you.
Article 2. To see if the Town Meeting will vote to amend Article 3 of the June 2, 2020 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Decrease line item number 016101-511216. Library associates from $244,711 to $170,247. Decrease line item number 016101-511228. Assistant Director Circulation and Patrons from $5,000 to no dollars. Decrease line item number 01303-5691. Norfolk Assessment from $63,000 to $45,512. Decrease line item 019101-5175. Group Insurance from $8 million to $7,800,000. Decrease line item number 011992-5212. Streetlights from $95,000 to $75,000. Decrease line item 011411-511101. Chief Assessor from $76,073 to $66,973. Decrease line item 011411-511102. Clerical from $42,658 to $24,658. Decrease line item number 011411-511120. Assistant Assessor from $56,292 to $51,592. Decrease line item 011451-511102. Clerical from $146,544 to $131,544. Decrease line item number 015411-511102. Assistant Director from $50,106 to $25,106. Decrease line item number 015411-5111115. Band Drivers from $38,500 to $33,500. Decrease line item number 015412-5480. Minibus Gas from $9,000 to $4,000. Decrease line item number 014112-5800. Road Reconstruction from $537, excuse me, $535,000 to $435,000. Decrease number 01201. School Department Appropriation from $27,676,055 to $27,214,157. Decrease line item number 012111-511108. Patrolmen from $2,122,458 to $2,107,458. Decrease line item number 012202-5710. Travel from $3,000 to no dollars. Decrease line item number 012212-585701. Equipment from $30,000 to $18,000. Increase line item number 019101-5172. Unemployment Compensation from $50,000 to $200,000. Increase line item number 011992-5340. Telephone from $47,000 to $57,000. Increase line item 011991-511203. Clerical Part-Time from $11,761 to $21,761, excuse me, $761. And further to approve an amended fiscal year 2021 budget for the Town of Auburn of $66,937,750, or act on anything relative there too. Is there a motion on Article 2? Mr. Baker.
I move to the Town Meeting, vote to amend the article 3 of the June 2, 2020 Annual Town Meeting, respect to the law, October 27, 2020.
You have a second. Any questions?
Good evening. My name is Russell Tallisman, Precinct 2, 175 Oxford Street. My first question is on the line item 5800 on the road reconstruction. I like the decreases, but the decrease on the road reconstruction, Auburn's roads are pretty bad. Why are we cutting their budget? My second one is on the increased line item of 5172, the unemployment comp. I understand the whole COVID thing. I was under the impression that with the stimuluses, and I thought it was the state and the federal government that was helping us this, so why is there a $150,000 increase?
Mr. Moderator, I'd be happy to answer those questions, but I'd like to give a presentation first that may address some of these concerns.
I didn't hear what you said.
I prepared to give a presentation in advance of any questions. I'd be happy to answer those questions after my presentation, because some of those questions may be answered while giving my presentation.
Any other questions on Article 2? Article 3 then. To see if the Town...
One minute, two, three.
Go ahead.
I want to thank all the town meeting members who are present tonight and attending under these difficult conditions, so I want to thank you all. I'd like to highlight some of the aspects that's leading to some of these budget reductions as a result of the economic collapse because of COVID-19. And if I could draw attention to the packet that was mailed to each one of you. We are not doing a video presentation tonight for a number of reasons, because a number of town meeting members wouldn't be able to watch it because they're attending either in their cars or in the cafeteria where they wouldn't be able to see the screen. So because of the onset of COVID-19, we realized some major reductions in not only our local revenue, but our state revenue as well. If I can draw your attention to page 2 of the presentation that I mailed to you in advance of tonight's meeting. As you can see, our local receipts were projecting a loss from where we were back on June 2, when we presented the annual budget on the football field. We're now expecting a local revenue reduction of $648,221.4. And the bulk of that is really coming from our hotel motel revenue. That occupancy tax basically dried up because our hotels were closed. We have five hotels. One hotel was closed as a result of some code violations and has remained closed since. The other ones completely shut down right now. They're lucky if they have 25% to 50% occupancy, so we know we're going to receive less revenue from our room mark tax. Our meals tax was down for the last quarter of last fiscal year for a number of reasons. Our restaurants were closed for a period of time. There is a takeout, primarily a takeout option now with limited seating, so we know that there's going to be a reduction. And we don't know if this virus, we're seeing a surge again. We don't know what an impact that's going to have on our businesses for the rest of the fiscal year. We know that the governor announced, although we don't have an approved state budget, that they are recommending level state aid from FY '20 to '21. That resulted in a reduction of $509,390. So those two items alone resulted in a reduction of $1,157,000. So we know we have to make budgetary cuts in order to balance the budget as a result of that revenue loss. And that's where we address all of these items under Article 2 that was just read by the moderator. So, Mr. Tallisman, in addressing some of your concerns, if you turn to page 3, you're going to see the annual town meeting recommendation and the revised fall town meeting tonight and the corresponding change to the right. We have total reductions in Article 2 of $820,650. And let me just touch upon some of the large ones. Certainly, we did receive from CARES money that's helping offset these reductions. Originally, we came in with about $2.3 million value of reductions if we did not receive the CARES money from the federal government. The school department received three grants totaling approximately maybe about $700,000. I may be off a little bit. And the town received a CARES grant to be shared by the entire town of about $1.4 million, which transcends over two fiscal years. So it applies to the last quarter of last fiscal year, and it applies to the first two quarters through 1230 of December 30. We have to make these cuts because we believe FY '22 is going to be as difficult, if not more difficult, than the year we're in right now. So we had to make these cuts. In terms of unemployment comp, we had about three layoffs in town. We tried to minimize the layoffs that we had through these series of cuts. Certainly, personnel is important to the operation of our departments on a day-to-day basis. It's critical. We don't want to cut those positions if we don't have to. It's very difficult to bring those individuals back on. Not only that, but we're assuming a lot of additional admin work as a result of COVID-19. The health department, the code department are taxed above 100%. They're out straight. They're dealing with COVID issues on a day-to-day basis. The school department as well is dealing with COVID. Town administration is dealing with COVID. There's a lot of admin work that needs to be done in order to qualify for these reimbursements. Unemployment comp, even though we laid off three people, when unemployment comp approves a claim, they go back 10 quarters. So someone may not even be working in our system for the past two years, and we still have to pay the unemployment comp. Pre-COVID in March, we were paying $2,000 a month for unemployment comp. In the month of June, we paid $22,000. That's how many claims are out there. Not only that, but there's a lot of fraud. A lot of claims have been made for individuals who are currently working for our town. That needs to be monitored on a day-to-day basis. Fraud is running rampant. We have to check that every day. We have to contest these filings, and we have to stay on top of it every hour of every day. In terms of road reconstruction, the original cut was 200,000, Mr. Tallisman. We were able to water that down to 100 through discussions with the DPW director, whatever. We feel as though we can get through one-year reduction. Our plan is to reinstate what we're cutting here, especially in our reserves, in future years. That's a priority. We want to get back to where we were pre-COVID. But like everything else, we're feeling the results of the downturn in our economy. We have to react to that. We'll get back to those levels of funding, but it's going to take some time. We were able to offset our group health insurance by $200,000 by offering a premium holiday to our employees. What does that mean? That means we're relying on our trust, which has a balance of $10 million, to pay for our employees and the employer's share of health insurance for a period of two weeks. That saved the town roughly $200,000 between town and school, and it enables us to get to a difficult time. We take pride in the fact that we built our trust up to a healthy level where we can do that. That is not only money of our employees, that's money for, that's the town's money as well. So we exercise options like that in difficult times, and that's why we built up the reserves to that level, to provide for basically a rainy day fund for when we're faced with situations such like this. In summary, we have a total cherry sheet loss of $509,390. Our local receipts is down $648,221. We were able to reduce our tax levy. That's the amount of taxation we levy against real estate and personal property tax. We offset that by roughly $210,000. So we have total revenue estimated adjustments of $1,368,444. And by reducing that amount of tax levy, we're only taxing our residents and our commercial industrial taxpayers 0.57%. That's only about $200,000 out of the $1.1 million we're allowed to tax on an annual basis. That means our excess levy is going to go up by about $900,000. So it's a savings to the taxpayers. We're trying to offer you some relief by trying to hold down the level of taxation as best we can in these difficult times. On the appropriation side, we have reductions not only in Article 2, but in Article 3 of That also provides for the article that we put on hold at the annual town meeting for $500,000 for OPEB. We removed that from the tax levy. That's part of that $1.3 million. And Article 14, I'm sorry, the article for the overlay of $20,000 is covered through overlay surplus, but the 24 of the clerk would give a total amount of appropriation adjustments of $1,365,650, leaving a difference of roughly $2,794, which we'll be able to reduce the tax levy in order to balance that out. So, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
We can wait for just a minute or so to see if anybody from the cafeteria has a question or somebody from the outside has a question. I don't see anybody coming in. All those in the favor, please raise your hand, signal, however you're supposed to signal. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 3. To see if the Town Meeting will vote to amend. CIP Article 4, June 2, 2020 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Decrease number 0021552-582101. Security Cameras by $45,000. Information Technology. Decrease number 022102-582105. Decrease number 022102-582105, police cruisers by $15,000.
You need to slow down on this voting because Darlene and I need to check the 13 cards that we have out here to make sure they agree with what you're doing.
Decrease number 022202-582114, departmental equipment by $15,000, fire department. Increase number 02202-582145, fire prevention vehicle number 2 by $10,000. Or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion on Article 2?
There is, Mr. Moderator. My apologies for not having the mic on last time. I move the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article 4 of the June 2, 2020 annual town meeting as follows. Decrease 021552-582101, security cameras by $45,000, information technology. Decrease 022102-582105, police cruisers by $15,000, police department. Decrease 022202-582114, departmental equipment by $15,000, fire department. Increase 022202-582145, fire prevention vehicle number 2 by $10,000 in the fire department. I now am going to move immediately to amend this motion. I now move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article 4 of the June 2, 2020 annual town meeting by removing the reference TL tax levy on page number 76, line item under school department, building rehab Swanson Road for $45,000. And in its place, substitute BP bond proceeds. And to further amend on page 73 under DPW cemetery, line item 0, turn MOA by changing the following. TL tax levy $15,000 to TL tax levy $5,000, and BP bond proceeds $10,000.
Is there a second? Yes.
Mr. Stensel, can we vote to amend a motion if we never seconded the original article?
I was told to let it go through as one article with one vote. The amendment that he put in, that's what I've been told to do.
Okay. It seemed irregular to me. I just wanted clarification.
I happen to agree with you that it was that way, but I did check into it on you. Anybody else? Here's John.
John Stensel, precinct five. What does that all mean?
Okay, good question. So the first part of what Mr. Baker read is a reduction in the capital to address some reductions that I identified in the presentation. The second part of that is basically housekeeping issue is a result of some concerns raised by bond counsel. It doesn't change the value of any one of those articles that were voted at the annual town meeting. It just shifts the funding source from tax levy to bond proceeds. So there was one project that they were questioning whether or not bond proceeds could be used to fund a lease agreement that is in existence right now. So to remove any of that confusion, we propose to make a minor change. It didn't change the dollar amount. It just changed the funding source in order to appease bond counsel.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Wait a second. I gotta get the question. We're all set. That message was for me. I want to explain this to you how we're going to vote. I want to count, because this is a two-thirds vote, how many people are opposed. The people in here are going to raise their hands if they are opposed. Cafeteria, the same. I believe the people in the parking lot are putting on their hazard lights to show that they... Headlights? They're blinkers. They're blinkers to show that they are opposed to it. So it'll be a few minutes before we get this vote. I'm going to ask just who is opposed to it first. Yes? This is a two-thirds.
We are amending the article first. We have to vote on the amendment first. I believe that's mandatory. And then we have to vote on the actual article as amended.
As I said before, the way it was explained to me, it was okay to go with it as one article. But if you... Okay, I'll go along with what you say. We're just going to vote to amend it. To amend it, I believe, is only a majority vote. Okay?
Right. Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Do you want me to read that first part? Move it, get a second on it, so this can be done, and then do the amendment.
Do a second on the original article, I guess? Is that what you want, Mr. Baker?
Yes, I'd read again the original and get a second, and then we move to amend.
Okay. Is there a second on the article? Here's a second. Second the amendment. Now I believe we can vote. On the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment raise their hands. All those opposed to the amendment? I gotta wait a second until they come in from the outside. And nobody outside is opposed? Thank you. Then it is a vote. That was on the amendment. Now we're voting on the entire article. Two-thirds vote.
Are they blinking if they're in favor or blinking if they're opposed?
I didn't hear what she said.
Are they going to reflect their class if they were opposed to the...
Oh, yes, they're going to do it that way.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, this is a two-thirds vote. So you've only got to vote right now if you're opposed to it. So I'll ask all those that are opposed to raise their hands. I do not see any hands up in this room here. I will wait to see what the other two rooms have to say.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Outside, if you can just repeat it one more time, because we do have votes to be counted out there. However, it just, they're missing the beginning of it. So if you can just repeat what you're asking, it will take us a few minutes to just go down and gather the votes from the cars.
They just want me to vote for outside, right?
It's taking us a little bit longer.
If they're opposed to it, correct?
To get the votes outside. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For those opposed to the vote, excuse me, opposed to Article 3, you people can please vote now if you are opposed to it. Thank you. Nobody in the cafeteria was opposed to it. Outside, nobody is opposed, therefore it is a two-thirds vote. We can get on with Article number 4, which is also a two-thirds vote, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose the balance of the CIP funds for district-wide truck procurement account, account number 302016-582144, as established by Articles 17 and 18 of the June 2, 2020 annual town meeting in the amount of $9,904 for use in conjunction with AHS Building Rehab, account number 302019-581961, for purpose of upgrading the exterior doors at the Auburn High School or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion on Article 4, Mr. Baker?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town meeting vote to repurpose the balance of CIP funds for district-wide truck procurement, account number 302016-582144, as established by Articles 17 and 18 of the June 2, 2020 annual town meeting in the amount of $9,904 for use in connection, in conjunctions, pardon me, with AHS Building Rehab, account number 302019-581961, for purpose of upgrading the exterior doors at the Auburn High School.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? We'll wait till we hear from the cafeteria and the outside. If you have a question in here, please come to the front mics. And I'll come to the mics and please talk into it. There are no questions outside. Are there any questions from the cafeteria? Thank you. There are no questions from the cafeteria. So we're ready to vote on Article 4, which is a two-thirds article, which is a two-thirds majority. It's a two-thirds vote. Once again, for all those opposed, I would like them in this room to raise their hand, the cafeteria to raise their hand, and whatever they're doing outside. If you, only if you are opposed to it. So if you could do that now in this room, in the cafeteria, in the outside. Thank you. No one was opposed, nobody is opposed outside, and nobody is opposed in the cafeteria. Therefore, it's a two-thirds vote. Article 5, to see if the town meeting will vote to grant an easement authorizing national grid to install two utility poles and a transformer described in the grant of easement document as the overhead system in the underground system on a Brimma Elementary School property located at 35 Swanson Road, Auburn as part of an upgrade to the school's electrical service or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion on Article 5?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town meeting vote to grant an easement authorizing national grid to install two utility poles and a transformer described in the granted easement document as the overhead system and the underground system on the Brimma Elementary School property located at 35 Swanson Road, Auburn as part of an upgrade to the school's electrical service.
There is a second. Any questions? There's no questions in this room. Just wait a minute or so, and hopefully the outside and cafeteria will be able to report if they have any. There are no questions outside.
There are no questions in the cafeteria.
There are no questions in the cafeteria. We're ready for the vote on question 5, to see if the town meeting will vote to grant an easement authorizing national grid to install two utility poles. All those in favor raise their hands. All those opposed?
No one in, no one in the cafeteria is opposed.
Thank you.
No one is opposed.
Thank you. Then it is a vote. Article 6, to see if the town meeting will vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 4 of the June 2, 2020 annual town meeting, package charge building rehab, removal of underground oil tank, account number 302020-... underground oil tank, account number 302020-582049, as follows. Authorize the balance of funds in this account in the sum of $35,485 to be used for the purpose of continuing the HVAC improvements for proper air exchange in the building, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Baker?
I move that the town meeting vote to repurpose CIP funds by amending Article 4 of the June 2, 2020 annual town meeting, package charge building rehab, removal of underground oil tank, account number 302020-582049, as follows. Authorize the balance of funds in this account in the sum of $35,485 to be used for purposes of continuing the HVAC improvements for proper air exchange in the building.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? This is a two-thirds vote, by the way, I want to point out to you people. Yes, sir.
Tom, can I, Precinct 4, just a quick question, does this mean that the removal of that tank will be deferred, or is this a replacement in there?
Dr. Hanfield?
Good evening, everyone, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The removal of the oil tank, does this mean that this is going to be deferred to another time, or is this?
So, so thank you for that question, the oil tank's been removed, the balance of the monies that are left over are there, because there was no environmental costs associated with the removal of the oil tank, and so those monies are being repurposed to go with HVAC, so it's done, and so we're just using to repurpose those monies into something else in the building.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no questions.
Okay, there are no, thank you.
No questions in the caf.
Thank you. They're all set. Okay, we're on Article 6. Which one are we on? Six, right? It's a two-thirds vote, so we'll just do, how many people are opposed to it? It's a two-thirds vote. So all those opposed, please raise your hand, or do what they do outside.
No one in the cafeteria is opposed.
Thank you. Nobody opposed outside?
No one is opposed outside.
Okay, then it is a two-thirds vote. I believe that was the last two-thirds article, by the way. Article number 7, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $13,080 for the ambulance receipts for new equipment, stair chairs for the ambulance, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Baker?
There is, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $13,080 from ambulance receipts for new equipment, stair chairs for the ambulance.
There's a second. Well, this is a majority vote, so all those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, nobody's opposed in this room?
No one is opposed in the cafeteria.
Nobody's opposed in the cafeteria?
You need to clarify if it's in favor or opposed, so that we can count people's blinkers out here. Are we deciding it's in favor first, they're gonna blink, and then wait a few minutes
If anybody is opposed outside, just put on your blinker.
There is no one opposed outside.
Thank you very much. Article 8, therefore, Article 7 passes. Article 8, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $130,000 from free cash for repairs to Engine 3, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Stensel, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $130,000 from free cash for repairs to Engine 3.
Is there a second? There is a second. We have one question in here.
Hello, Russell Towlesman, Precinct 2. I think it was in the June meeting, we appropriated some funds for this, I don't know how to word it, so a super-duper lift, so the highway department can maintain fire trucks, and highway department trucks and everything. What is wrong with the, what truck, and what is everything that's wrong with the truck, where we have to go outside of town services?
Mr. Moderator, Steve Coleman, the Fire Chief, I'm in the balcony, if anyone's looking for me.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The $130,000 that's being sought this evening, Engine 3 is a 2010 Pierce Pumper, the vehicle has been out of service since July, when it failed its state safety inspection. Currently, the two frame rails on the truck have some rusting issues, which is called what has caused what is called frame jacking. So a significant amount of rust and corrosion has separated the frame, so the vehicle needs two new frame rails. That is not work that can be done locally by the Fleet Maintenance Division, so it actually has to go back to the factory, and we anticipate that even if the money is appropriated this evening, that the truck will be out of service for probably another 10 to 11 months, due to some backlogging with COVID and some shutdowns with the factory. So, the question that the gentleman answered, or asked about the lifts, those lifts are in process, I believe they've been ordered, so we're just waiting on those to arrive, but this is work that can't be done by the Fleet Maintenance Division. One more point about this Engine 3, our capital layout for pumps of this nature is, we hope to get 20 years out of a pump, so we really need to get another 10 years out of this vehicle in order to stay consistent with our capital plan. So we're not spending this $130,000 this evening, and then, you know, this truck will be replaced in three or four years. So, this is the primary pump that runs out of the West Auburn Station, we are currently running a spare pump, a reserve piece, as a frontline over the next year until this repair is made. So like I said, this particular engine is slated to be replaced in 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Then I think we're ready for the vote. Let's just do those that are opposed. If you're opposed outside, use your flashes. All those opposed, please raise your hand. I don't see any in this room.
We have one opposed in the cafeteria.
Thank you. This is a majority vote, by the way.
There is no opposition outside.
Thank you very much. Therefore, it is a vote. But it is one against, yeah.
We have to have these two people vote. You have to call for a vote approval, if there's a vote. In order to have a majority vote, you have to have these two votes being made above the yard, because there is one that's opposed to the yard. Just ask for a vote.
Okay, I'll ask for the vote. We'll vote on this again for to have a second vote. All those in favor?
We just need to ask for a vote to approve of this yard.
Oh. I thought I already asked that, how many opposed this article, and I got that, yeah, nobody was in here that was opposed to it. That I saw. Mr. Dufour?
Mr. Moderator, I'm Precinct 4, Precinct 5, no, you started off asking only for the opposed, which makes sense, it makes it, especially with the vote outside, makes it more clear, but you only asked for opposed, you didn't ask for any in favor until Mr. Bowling mentioned it.
Thank you. Are we all set with that, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you. So Article 8 passes. Article 9 is another majority, to see if the town meeting will vote to approve $250,000 from free cash to the Town Stabilization Fund, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Baker?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $250,000 from free cash to the Town Stabilization Fund.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. I'll flash your flashes. Thank you. All those opposed? Nobody in here?
All in favor in the cafeteria.
Are you opposed? All set in the cafeteria?
All in favor outside.
Thank you. It is a vote. Article 10, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $400,000 from free cash to the Town OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Stensel, I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $400,000 from free cash to the Town OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
I'm Russell Towlesman, again, on Precinct 2. Between Article 10, 9, and, yeah, 8, I'm looking at probably three-quarters of a million dollars here. I'm old-school, so I don't understand free crop cash, I kind of like the term in the reserves. So I'd like to know how much we really have in our reserves, because we just were pulling out three-quarters of a million dollars here, and also, if you could explain a little more detail to me about the Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Fund for the $2,400,000?
Mr. Kazanovich?
That's an actuarial value, an actuarial value for our employees and our retirees' health insurance costs, based upon a snapshot in time. Our post-employment liability is about, currently, right now, about $26 million. Our balance in that account is about $5 million in our trust, which is a funding ratio of close to 20%. A couple of years ago, our ratio was 5%, because our liability was a lot higher, it was like $56 million, and we had a ratio of about $4 million, or about 5%. We are, our financial stability by our rating agencies is now a major factor on how we're funding our OPEB liability. So, this is not only important for municipal government, it's important for all businesses throughout the country. This is a major rating factor on how they determine a business's financial stability. We made a commitment through our tax levy to fund this on an annual basis by a half million dollars. Given COVID, we peeled back that $500,000 from tax levy, and we're funding it through free cash. Free cash is an accumulation of operating surplus or loss during a municipality's fiscal year, so it's compounded. Prior to this year's certification of free cash, our free cash balance was $13,903,000. Last year, we had a $1.8 million gain, it brought that balance up to $15.7 million. We have a financial policy that allows 50% of that net gain to be appropriated, not for operating expenses, but for one-time capital, or one-time needs, or to feed our reserves. And this is a policy that was adopted by the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen back in 2012, presented to town meeting, and endorsed by town meeting to accept this practice. So our current balance in, in our OPEB is about $5.4 million, our current balance in stabilization is about $3.2 million.
So, just so I can get a better clarity for myself and some people that ask me about the free cash surplus, is the revenue from that, does that come from, I don't know how to put it, maybe over taxation, or how does that reserve get built?
No, it's a combination of several things, it's revenue over, it's revenue over expense. So if we have an appropriation surplus, that closes out the free cash. If our revenue exceeds what we estimated, that closes out the free cash. If you look at the level of taxation, we haven't taxed to 2.5 in over 10 years, so it's not a result of additional taxation. I would even ask you to look at other communities in central Massachusetts, what their excess levy is, that's a reflection of how much we're not taxing our community. Our excess levy is $6 million. I think the closest community in central Massachusetts doesn't exceed $2 million, so we're far above other communities in central Massachusetts. We're proud of that record, we don't tax to the max, we never have, and we're gonna continue to try to maintain a low tax rate as best we can.
All right, I want to thank you, because now I have an understanding, I was very confused on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a question on Article 10? Not seeing, not seeing any? All those in favor, please signify by raising their hand. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor in the cafeteria.
Thank you.
All in favor outside.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Please raise your hands. I don't see any in this room. And they said all were in favor in the cafeteria and the outside, so Article 10 passes. It was a majority vote. Article 11, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $20,000 from the overlay surplus for training from Vision Tyler and for Vision Commercial Analysis as the commercial valuations of personal property will be impacted by COVID-19, or act on anything relative there too. Mr. Baker?
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $20,000 from overlay surplus for training from Vision Tyler and for Vision Commercial Analysis as the commercial valuation of personal property will be impacted by COVID-19.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? There are no questions in this room. There are no questions outside.
No questions in the cafeteria.
There are no questions in the cafeteria. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Thank you. All those opposed? We have one gentleman, one here. Counted one, one, right? Yeah, okay.
All in favor in the cafeteria.
Thank you.
All in favor outside.
Thank you. Therefore, the article passes. It was a majority vote. Just two were opposed to it. Article 12, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend section 2.02 of the Auburn, of the Town of Auburn general bylaws as follows. A, delete section 2.02 from its entirety. B, insert in place, insert in place thereof the following. 2.02, annual town meeting and election. The annual town meeting for the transaction of all businesses except the election of off-town offices in the determination of such matters as leave require a vote by ballot shall be called to order on the first Tuesday in May. Two, the annual election of town officers and committees shall be held on the third Tuesday of May each year, or act on anything relative there too. Is there a motion? Mr. Baker?
I move that the town meeting vote to amend section 202 of the Town of Auburn general bylaws as printed in the October 27, 2020 special town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions?
No questions in the cafeteria.
There are no questions in this room either. Thank you, cafeteria. There are no questions outside. All those in favor, please signify by raising their hand. Thank you. All those opposed? I don't see anybody in this room that's opposed to it.
All in favor in the cafeteria.
All in favor of the cafeteria. Thank you. All in favor outside. Therefore, Article 12 passes. Article 13, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $20,000 from general fund revenues for unanticipated costs associated with the special town election and changes to state election laws, or act on anything relative there too. Mr. Baker?
I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $20,000 from general fund revenues for unanticipated costs associated with the special town election and changes to state election laws.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions on that?
No questions in the cafeteria.
No questions in the cafeteria. Thank you. No questions outside. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I didn't see any hands up opposed in the auditorium.
All in favor in the cafeteria.
Thank you.
All in favor outside.
Thank you very much. It is a vote. Article 14, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the Auburn zoning map bylaw by changing 10 Maple Street, 060096 and 8 Maple Street, 060079, from residence A to highway business as shown below, or act on anything relative there too. Mr. Baker?
I move that the town meeting vote to postpone this article indefinitely.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? You opposed to this? One opposed. In here, one.
All in favor of delaying it in the cafeteria.
Mr. Baker?
Yes, Mr. Stensel.
You have another motion?
I do. I move we dissolve.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you for coming, by the way.